What can I cancel? I didn't even know what I was supposed to read today. Maybe I should watch the news. Oh, I don't watch the news anymore.
No, not till there. You can just look at the weather.
I'm married to a farmer. He's supposed to tell me this.
He didn't know.
Yeah, the ignore the earth.
Thank you. All right, six o'clock. Praise for pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, also going to read our district mission statement in partnership with communities. The mission of the Dover Plinfield School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible by former members. Okay, all board members are present as well as our superintendent. And I've got, we've got several guests this evening. Let's go on to adopting the agenda, but we do have some changes to the agenda. Under reports, we're going to add 6.5 EMDGF is going to give us a little report tonight. And then we're going to move the consent agenda, all of eight, we're going to flip eight and nine. Ronnie brought up a good point. We cannot approve paying our bills if we have a bus purchase that we need to approve first. So with that being said, we're just going to flip those numbers for Amy and Brooke who are recording. So we don't have any.
So I want to thank everybody for being here this evening in light of, just want to remind the gallery, in light of our current environment in the world, every time I turn on the TV or read the paper, school board meetings have become kind of a raucous event. And I just want to remind everybody, just as we as a board ask for no one per se gestures of approval or disapproval that happened during the business meeting, we just want to remind the public that we as a board value each other's opinions and we can respectfully disagree. And with one another, we'll conduct interviewing in a professional manner. So anyway, thank you for everybody being here. Let's get to business. So no public comments, 5.2 rebel recognition. We're two weeks into school. Anybody have anything? Oh, why do I always do that, Ronnie? Dang it.
She caught you first.
Oh, you guys keep me on my toes. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda as stated? Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? Second by Ronnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. All right, now no public comment, 5.2 rebel recognition. You gotta have something.
Oh, I have something. I heard a few people and myself really appreciate the flow of traffic between high school and elementary, the two-way. I've gotten a lot of comments that they, people have seemed to prefer over the one-way. I don't know, seems kind of silly, but I thought I'd throw it out there. Something I've heard that a few times. So.
I just want to thank all the staff for being super flexible. I know the start of the year, they had some room changes and different things. My first, or second grader, she would be mad that I just thought of her as a first grader. My second grader was upstairs in the music room and her teacher, Mr. Richards rocked that out. And I know several other teachers were very adapting and just made it fun and like a, almost like a fun surprise to do something different, when I'm sure it was just a complete headache on their end. But my kids thought it was like the best thing ever. So I'm sure lots of those stories are rolling around, so just thanks to all the staff.
They got to go to their new room today.
Yeah, they did. Yep. Very good. She got to go to her locker. That was a big thing. So, but thank you to all the staff for making that feel like a fun thing instead of a stressful thing.
Agreed. Activities are up and running. Lots of happy kids' faces. It's very fun to see kids participating and doing things they enjoy, so. Awesome. All right, let's move on to 6.1 technology report. John, hello. Haven't seen you in forever. How are you?
I'm well. I'm just going to burn through my list real quick, what I've done in the past. One will be from a kind of instruct type overview. The other one will be more from an operations overview. From the instructional overview, we had Ryan Birgit. It's been fun watching him be on site. He's here every day. He's, Andy Cox was the former technicalist. But our goal with Ryan this fall was to build relationships, build trust, start working with the teachers, building a classroom and really help them out with whatever they need to. So that's gone well and again, it's kind of fun to watch. One thing that he has been helping staff out with is a new tool for DGF is called clever. And what clever does, it takes our student information system, our sections and our rosters, and it puts it in our clever platform. And then it allows teachers to use it in different applications. And it can get used by different areas, maybe like an elementary or primary grade. The teachers can print off badges. And we now have some tablets, so like kindergarten, first graders, they literally have like a little QR badge and it scans over the camera, it logs that student into the device. And then the application that we use at DGF, it can open up some of those applications. Depending on the degree of integration, some of these applications will actually, once the student clicks on it, will start doing that initial assessment, like iExcel or Star. And without having to put in that username, put in that password. So there's, there's some value for the primary grade teachers on that one. But it can also be used at the secondary level as well. So we use Gold Guard, iExcel is another piece. Staff don't need to be manually putting in every period, every section. We have this stuff, this information in synergy. So let's, let's have that replicated to clever basis. And then as students come and go, teachers don't need to be doing manual data. So that's new to DGF. BenQ displays. Last year, we bought a handful of BenQ displays from the classroom. That is a solution we're looking at utilizing to replace the smart boards and projectors. Some of these smart boards we have had since 2009. They work, but they're just, they're outdated, they're old. And we know as we retrofit some of the classrooms, we're going to put up the display. We're not going to do a projector, smart board because the technology just has improved. And it's become more, the cost has dropped substantially. So it makes it a more realistic solution than what it was maybe even five years ago. What we learned last year is from a smart board replacement, easy peasy. That meets, you know, meets those terms. My goal this year is for the teachers that have that, let's take a look at some of the capacity, some of the other areas than just a traditional touchscreen. The reality is some of these solutions now the kids can be on their device and a kid can stream his or her content on the, on the display for the classroom wirelessly. And that can be in the classroom, even out of the classroom. So if we have kids that are gone for whatever reason for a period of time, the technology is there to allow them to see what's being casted on that TV or share his or her content remotely. We're just not there yet. We just, we've got to take this year to say, hey, is this something that we want to use or be aware of? I like the idea of that potential, that solution having that, you know, something that could be in every classroom. We just have continuous discussions, both formal and informal, between sometimes staff meetings, sometimes leadership, you know, meetings. I'm just looking at the value of technology and making sure we're leading it for educational purposes first. A lot of times people hear me say, in my perfect world, the technology is invisible. What I mean when I say that is it's simply a tool, nothing more, nothing less. And let's make sure that when we spend the kind of money that we're looking at spending, it needs to be aligned with either a school or district, you know, goal to help align, you know, align that piece. And I think one of the positives with this pandemic, the hard skills from both staff, students, myself and my parents, has increased. I mean, the idea of say you're going to do a conference and have people connected remotely to do a lesson. People wouldn't even consider that, you know, pre-COVID. Now it's like, yeah, we can do that. You know, to what degree do we want to utilize some of these tools? So there is a higher degree of awareness of what the tools can and can't do. But also I think we kind of try to continue to expand. If something doesn't work and we fumble and fail, that's okay. We learn from this. We're constantly evolving on that thing. And let's kind of see what, what works and what doesn't. Prior to me switching over to my operations list, are there any thoughts, questions or concerns with those items?
The one question I had was, you know, we talked about a retreat. Were you able to like do a survey of all our different programs that we use and get rid of some stuff? Were we able to purge some subscriptions?
It's a work in progress, so. So yes, that.
Working towards that 10%.
Yes. Yes, that is work in progress. I, and we've talked some of this on admin and I've talked with some, you know, some staff too. We want to find something that's fair for the, for the teachers, for the students. And if we're going to make a change, what is that, you know, that notice? Because we got some, we got staff saying, hey, let's try product X, Y, Z. It might have been 10 years ago, but they got a lot of content out of it. And they tried different things out, which is, you know, which is great. But prior to cutting something or making a change, we're trying to find that, that balance, that what's fair. All right, this tool may have been the tool 10 years ago. It's not the case so much now. What's fair so that we're going to make a migration to something current without pulling the rug out from, pulling the rug out from anything? So and it was somewhat discussed last year, but in full transparency with COVID, we just said, hey, let's, let's get through this year. We don't want to be, you know, rocking the boat too much. So it was, it was delayed for a year, but I feel confident. That's something that I personally want to address this year. So from a support and budgeting piece for selfish reasons, helps. Quick couple of things on operations overview. This summer, we applied for a federal one-time funding, emergency connectivity funds. This is different from S R two or S R three. It really popped up, like middle of May deadline was like mid-July. It was a tight window. I don't want to think a lot of schools knew about it. But long story short, they are showing some schools, depending on your free reuse, up to 100% reimbursement on any technology-related costs that helps bridge that gap, that connection. So your mobile hotspots, student devices, things like that. We throw a hat, you know, we won't know what that looks like until this fall. But that's an opportunity that we can, can utilize and create up some multiple dollars. We'll, we'll take advantage of that. So cross our fingers. We'll get something out of it. So I'm optimistic, but we'll find out. I'm going discussions with JLG Comstock, Obernall. It's Mr. Austin Crowder shared with me before, you know, we got a standard on our HVAC system. We got a standard on our clocks and our, you know, intercoms. While that's probably not exciting buzz-worthy news, it's, it's important. It's infrastructure. It's, it's setting the district up, in my opinion, the right way to do this for, we're talking at least the next 10 years of trying to find the standard and support. We have personnel come and go. At least we can say, yep, once you know the solution, we can send you over to the other site. And then you're not learning a whole new solution on it. So that is probably taking more time than I originally anticipated, but it's a good, you know, good investment, I think. Chromebook availability parts, it is still a hot mess. If we are probably looking at getting parts even, you know, for next summer, we'll probably have to, like we did last year, start getting in the weeds this winter. What are we going to find? What are we not going to find? Because the stuff that we got this summer was ordered in February and even then that was a maybe. So it did continue to be a challenge, like most industries are still experiencing. Career Academy, we are working on a lot of meetings and details on getting Power School and Synergy, talking to each other. The end goal is parents and students will still log into Synergy and see their classes. So getting the homework assignments and the tasks from one platform and another is, is manageable. It's trying to align some of that content. When the end of the quarters don't end on the same times, that's a part where we're putting a rectangle and a square and vice versa. That is, that's stuff we're, we're continuously working on. But that's why we're going to work together this year and we'll figure out what works and what doesn't. But that's, that's taking some time, so. And one last thing is, what we're sharing with the community this week, MBE, is setting up a mandate for schools to collect down to the student level, device and internet accessibility and broadband throughput. And the fact that they're having us track this in our student information system versus doing a, a simple survey tells me this isn't going to be a one and done. Then this is going to be something like free reuse your Mars, that's probably going to be recurring. The deadline to get that data, it's October 1. So I'll be working with Tracy and Brooke and I, you know, already kind of worked on some things already, but we'll be the last helping piece to the community. Parents can update this information through ParentView. For the ones that don't have internet capacity or connections, we'll have some offline, offline options for them as well. But that's, that's something that's coming. And then just planting a seed for this group, I talked with Mr. Husted a while ago. If this group thinks there's value on live streaming these board meetings, that's something we could possibly do. Google Meet has had the live stream option, but it was designed for internal domain users. But I've seen some other schools set up some public accounts to the community. There's pros and cons doing it each way on it. But if that's something maybe this group wants to entertain down the road, let me know or let Mr. Husted know. We can figure out some things to, to see if that's something worth pursuing. If not, what we're doing now, we can report it and make it available the next day. That's always, was an option.
And so if you live stream, can you record the live stream?
Yes. It's a, when that live streams happen, that is a recorded video. It's just essentially making it live or available. And I wish, for selfish reasons, I wish Google would have made that available for everyone. But by design, they build it for large organizations, for internal domain users. So it's no big deal for our staff. But if you don't have an DGF account, you're on the outside looking in. I wasn't comfortable with that, but I've talked with some other schools. I think there's some ways we can, we can make some public accounts if we want to pursue that. That's something we're, you know, we're looking at, I guess, so. Any thoughts, questions, concerns on those items? I know that's kind of fast and furious, but.
All right, 6.2, transportation report. Eileen is here. Hello.
Well, the good news is we're back to regular, regular COVID levels. We're not making A's, B's, C's, D's. The rioters are all happy and back. We don't have to figure out what they were, who was over date. Everybody's going. No distance. We're not missing anybody. So that's the good portion about that. And the really cool thing is we've got a new bus and piano radio, compliments of Jake Harden with us. And it works dynamically. I can actually, when I used to radio on the bus three, I had to go to two and then sometimes I had to go to 11 just to get one person. Now I can radio on the bus three, I get them on the first call. And what's really cool is Lori was East Grant Works today. She texted me and she said, oh my Lord, I mean, I heard every word on the radio today. Right? That is pretty cool. That's huge. They were saying they would figure they'd be here at my house, I was in North Chicago. But I'm thinking, East Grant Works? That's great. I'm sure they probably don't love it, but it's okay. We're experienced, the bus drivers are charging just like everybody else is. We do really good conferences, do a great job of carrying our daily routes. Our extracurriculars, where we do struggle because we have one bus and one extra driver that can actually pull them out. The good thing is we have a special end driver that has a CDL so that we can pull her and put her in the airtime committee. Bill Hurst, but Joe has done a really good job of rearranging some of the middle school stuff and putting it toward the end of the day so we can use round buses and free round them. The coaches have been really flexible, like, you know, hey, can't let you at 4:15, but I can get you there at 4:25 because they have a bus. Everybody's been working with that. Pretty much anything's possible. We all work together. I think that's the only work I think this year is making that.
So this is your plug for people watching. If you want an extra job and you love kids, go get your.
Drive a bus.
Yes, drive a bus. We want you.
We want you.
Yes, Eileen would be happy to tell you everything you need to know.
We had lots of negotiations that went great. New process with, you know, kind of received very, very well by everybody. Shannon was great. Ever listening to them, they felt like everything was covered, they were heard. Their suggestions were taken into place. I think everybody was very happy. So transportation is moving along.
One final question for Eileen. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, 6.3 board committee reports, and I just remembered I didn't text you to email everybody what you meant to do, so.
I gave you to text first. I volunteered.
You volunteered to be chair of the committee.
I did, I did. So Nelson Budget Committee meeting, 8.3. We talked about construction budgets and essentially looking, Shannon wanted to give a better idea on where everything was with regard to the contingencies. And I think that's probably coming up today. We have to talk about that. So that was one of the things that he was working on. We're coming up with a different budget sample, different, or we saw a sample of potential budget information that can go to the entire board. And Shannon's working on that, just a more useful format so that we can get a better sense of where money is going instead of the multi-page sheets looking at every category. So we still have that, but this would be a, it's a much easier way to keep track of where we're at. We talked about S R two and S R three funds. S R two, in the process of creating the list, they're trying to get the best thing for their buck. So the idea is to try to see all the different requests that are being made there. But that S R two money is going to be spent in the next month, which is pretty much where we're at right now. So we'll hear a little bit more about that today, I'm sure. S R three, my notes are a little cryptic here, but there was $227,000 needed in the application process. That portion of S R three, the statement is approved. But it needs to be used for learning loss. And then different intervention, interventionists, social workers, Apex. So those are some of those things. And then of course, there's other S R three funds, I believe, that are going all to that. So there's kind of two categories within S R three. And let's see, if I've got any other things I remember. And we talked a little bit about the activity bus, which didn't seem like it was going to work at the time, but I think things have changed in the front. So that's all I've got for that budget committee.
Any other committee meetings, all else, or any other joint dollars happening?
That new budget thing is in our board pack that the 2 is the one that we're kind of working on.
Awesome. Okay, wonderful. Let's move on to 6.4, superintendent reports.
Yes, well, this is going to play off what David said. I will, I will say that the S R two money is not going to be probably all spent this month. But we did use that. You guys saw in my weekly updates that we have to get state permission for that. They did it right away on Mondays. We did order it. The bus is coming on Wednesday. As Eileen talked about transportation and all that, that, that bus is going to relieve a lot of that extracurricular pressure for small teams again. The bus size is 14 or less, so it's going to be teams or groups or whatever of 14 or less. So there are quite a few different activities that that's going to work for. And we're excited about that because we can get a class B license. You have to go through tech tree training. There's, there's a little quick test. You got to do a little driving with Eileen, so. And then also physicals and whatnot. But it's, it's very simple compared to what it takes to get a bus license. So we're excited about that and having coaches get involved in getting certified so they can drive their teams to games and, and all that. So excited. But that's, S R two money is used for that. We also just spent, we're going to buy a scrubber, a floor scrubber. It's, it's constant repair on the computer, the one we have as a backup. S R two money can work for that as well, so we just purchased that. We'll be purchasing, I think it was, was it ordered yet? Turned into this again.
Is that for the one of them?
That's for the Dover side.
Are you buying new scrubbers that's been on the list for years ago?
So this one is for Dover. That one's been parked in the middle all the way in the mornings a few times. That's where she died last night. Okay, perfect. James runs under the hood, fixes it, works for a day or two. He's under the hood again. It's like, that's what this money is for, for cleaning. Awesome. Let's just fix that right now. Anyway, so that's, so that's where some of the S R two money is going. There's a fair amount of funds left there. We're going to work through that. So then when you get to the S R three, and I know I'm off here a little bit with this and I'm just playing off David here a little bit. And that is the S R three. There's a training on Thursday that I'll attend. Amanda from Brady Marks attended it last week. It's, it's typical state. There's a lot of weeds in this one. So she watched the training last week. She's going to watch it again. I'm going to watch it. It's, the application process is not user-friendly. So we're going to make sure we go through the process correctly because there's a lot of dollars. One of the things that David alluded to was some of the money, 270,000 has to be used for learning loss. It cannot be, we just found out, used for integrationists for this set of stuff now, which is, we hired those people for learning loss. Now they're saying it has to be outside the school pay. Perfect. So when they told us before, you can use it for these types of things, they were thinking we knew that it had to be after school somehow. Thanks a lot for telling us way after the fact. But anyway, we're working on, we have two and a half, almost three years to use this money. So we have Rebel Success, we have Apex, these types of things cost money. So we really feel that over the next two and a half years, we're going to be able to still use that money outside the school pay and, and go that route. So yeah, it's, it's, it is what it is. We're happy that we have it. We just have to make sure we jump through the right hoops so we use it the right way and so we get. So that's what that process is. So now let's flip into A is construction update. It's going well. It's working a lot better to have JLG every week walking through with the subcontractors and contractors. So now our, our file list, like I mentioned last time, is a lot shorter because they're on top of it a lot sooner. And so that's helped us a great deal. It's typical construction. Of course, it didn't rain all summer and Shannon opened his big mouth about a month and a half ago and said, well Travis, they said this has been perfect. You haven't had to stop for anything or, yeah. Yeah, I put it out there and my daughter always say, you put it out in the universe and now it's raining. Which I guess in hindsight, I'm glad I did because we needed to. Not so much for construction. But things are moving along just fine. I did have a budget meeting with Matt and Marcus, our Marcus from Brady Marks, last Thursday. Went through all the budget and where we're at currently with Comstock, the contingencies and there where our money is in the bank and how that looks. I shared that with the weekly update to you guys, kind of where we're at with that currently. Hoping that we don't have any changes between now and the end, which we know there will be some things. But, you know, again, knock on wood, right now we're in a pretty good place barring any major situation. So that was good. I'm going to meet with them monthly from here on out. So we have no surprises. So you guys, I can keep you up to date after I meet with them on the weekly updates. You know where our money is. I feel that's vital to the success of the finish of this project. So bus purchase, again, I talked about that in S R two. Thank you. Nicole did some homework on that. Really appreciate that. And you saved me a lot of hours of time trying to hunt down the same thing because I kept telling Eileen, I know what you can do. And she's like, well, my guy says, you know, so it was perfect. We both really appreciate you doing that and finding that. So yeah, that really helped us and we're excited about that. So calendar update. So this is a big deal. I talked to you guys, I don't know, it's been a few weeks ago maybe now, started the discussion about getting rid of these Wednesday light starts. I did bring it to the teachers' union. I really appreciate our conversation that had with them. They took it to their executive council and their executive council came back with, eh, and we think it's a great idea. So tonight in this board meeting, I hope that you guys feel that that would be good for more families than not. And I guess that's my focus is let's support our families first. I think those light starts put people in the bind. There was 100 questions. I had the same questions, like, I don't know, why was this put into place? So for this year, I hope, again, you guys get to go here later, but we can just eliminate those and get that information out to our family. those and get that information out to our families. Next one is enrollment numbers. I just shared these with you Friday as well. We're at 1566, I think it is. Is that right? Not exactly where we want to be, but it's, it's a very similar number to last year's start. During the year last year, we did add, I think, what did I say, 1577, we finished the year at. So hopeful that we can climb a little bit again. So kind of right back to where you were last year, and hopefully again. Like I said, we can move up from there. Strategic planning. I did talk to each teacher group, and what I mean by that is each teacher, each site, I should say. So Glendonville Elementary, High School, the Middle School, and Newark Elementary, I met with each site team, talked about getting this project started. I have it somewhere in here. I have Brooke and I work on a Google Doc, actually a Google Form, that we will be sending out, and that's going to be, yeah, it should be in there. So maybe you guys have a copy. It's real basic. But that's going to come out Thursday because I still need to meet with the custodians, the cooks, maintenance. I did meet with technology the other day. I'm going to meet with each group because I want to make sure each group, when they get this form on Thursday, they have, they have till Thanksgiving to fill it out. So it's not like, ooh, I can get it on the right way. They can do it with a friend, they can do it with a colleague, they can do whatever. We just want to find out what's great about the school right now, and we want to find out what are some things that we need to improve or want to improve. We'll get these gigantic lists and we'll put them together, and then we'll have more meetings as we get farther along. But this is that process. And one of the goals we talked about at Tupper Pond is to start working together to create a strategic plan. So as this stuff comes in, I'll be sharing with you in weekly updates. I'll be sharing with you at board meetings. And at some point this year, we're going to have to have a work session. Like I told the staff, I want them to get this done by Thanksgiving. We're going to take December to work with site teams and admin and kind of shrink it up, find commonalities between the groups, bring it together, shrink it up, then talk January, February. As far as let's vote on all these lists and kind of narrow that down. Once we get that narrowed down, we have March and April to kind of break it down and really get into the weeds about what's that specifically, what's, what's the goal. And that's where you guys are coming to play. Not that you can't add, I mean, you're going to get the same input, but March, April, then we'll kind of go through that. And then May, try to put something together as a tentative, kind of a rough draft start to our strategic plan. And the only reason I say that and not to finalize it is because our building won't be completely done. We haven't been completely moved in. And until that happens, I kind of want to leave a little buffer next fall for people to come in and actually go, oh, you know what, we really don't need that now because we just got it. I didn't realize I was going to get that. So I want to leave that open a little bit for next fall before we kind of stamp and say, okay, here's our plan. Here's what we're doing. Here's, you know, responsible for it. So. But it's a process and it's important to get it started. And so that's what we're doing. COVID update, great news. Just found out from Brooke right before the meeting, our number's at five. So we were at seven, and actually, when I sent the email, it was seven. And right after I sent it, probably a half hour, we had a number eight. And so I'll just leave it. Well, then now because some of these were earlier, those, some of those active cases have come out. So as of today, we're at five. So, which is good. Yep, we want to make sure. I'll just give kudos to the nursing staff and just getting information out. And honestly, also the families for keeping kids home that, yeah, I don't know for sure. Perfect. You go home right now. Let's just play the side of caution and check and make sure you know what, you know, you're coughing, you're sneezing, you're, you know what, let's stay home for a day. Perfect. You're not, actually nothing bad. Let's go to school. That kind of precautionary move from parents goes a long way, obviously, in our building. So that's, kudos to them and, and just to nursing staff again. Before we finish, I do want to say thank you. John has done a lot with this construction, and this, I should have said with construction. You know, there's the little things you don't think about until it's done, and you can't plug in a computer, or you can't get the internet, or you can't get, these are the things in the weeds that are not, you know, cute for everybody else to look at, but they're essential to the infrastructure and to the, to the building when it comes to actually putting it live. So I just really appreciate his punch list. Tracy back here, too. We go to our O A C meeting. She's always writing it down. We get a punch list that, that Comstock and J L G are going through with us every week. It's just, we're always in front of it because these people are doing their job very well, and I really appreciate it. It goes a long way to keep us, instead of, oh, shoot, we should have, no, we're, we're talking about it ahead of time. So I just really appreciate both your inputs. There you go. That's it. Any questions?
Couple of, it's that kindergarten situation manageable between the two sites with the numbers? I presume we didn't have very many ones switch from Newark to.
Nope, they didn't. Yeah, it's, I'll say this, Ronnie, no news is good news. So I haven't heard anything from either principal, and I haven't any teachers breaking my door down. So they are different. We're in that 21-ish, and we're smaller than that over here. Yeah. But yeah, so far so good.
The second question, kind of a side one. I still haven't seen anything from Jason on our gymnasium seat plan. I thought he was going to get to us.
Okay.
I just don't trust that situation until I see it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's all right.
He got burned the last time he did.
It sounds like. He got some false information. It's too bad. Tracy, maybe we can talk after the meeting. You can get on Procore. I think Procore will have the drawing, and it will show exactly what money's asking, I think. So maybe if you guys want to touch base now here, I think we can answer it. It's right on Procore so she can look up and look at the actual week term measurement. So. No, it's a great question.
Do you guys think the poll leaves, is that 30 inches?
I think it's 30, but we, remember when we were talking about it, we thought that was two, maybe two big, so we went with 28. Because I think ours are currently 24, maybe even smaller.
I think we said that night where you guys decided on 30.
I think it's 30.
32 is the widest you can go. 32 is.
Were they 32?
I don't know. 32 is the widest you can go. And I thought you guys said that night that it was 30, but we can look, we can look at the Procore.
Somebody gets a chance to get Phil to call and see what they actually have on.
You know what they have.
Yeah, yeah, we could. Yeah, we'll look at, let's hook up Tracy is the guru there. She can pop.
Just stop.
Procore will be able to get a measurement. So, yeah. Anything else?
Britt, I, I have a question. Do you want questions about, like, the COVID update now, or do you want it when we get to?
I think maybe when we get to that. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
I guess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll move to 6.5 E M D here. Kela, are you going to speak?
Yeah, we're at the first level, same.
Oh, it's the same.
I know we're kind of like a last minute, but we first want to just thank Mr. Heston for letting us and you letting us speak. We wanted to say thank you to the board. And Mr. Heston, the conversation came up about the late starts. Came up on a Friday at like almost seven in the morning. Shannon sent us an email, hey, can we talk about this? We already had a meeting, and we were in the building. We said, sure, can you meet us at our meeting? Yep, my meeting's at the same time. We were able to have a conversation about our thoughts.
Yep.
This was helpful.
Take it to our executive council, have a quick, and then.
By Sunday night, you said.
Share back with Shannon. We appreciated the opportunity to be a part of the conversation, and it's been great working with Shannon. He's been great with problem solving, and we've been able to head out concerns typically right from the start. So, yeah.
It's cool. And we were just thankful to be brought to the table right and helped get some of that stuff. We support where you're moving with Wednesdays. I'd like that to be known, publicly recorded.
And then, anything?
Well, I just want to comment on that. I'm happy to hear that because I did think that that would have been a really startling part around the elementary, working family. So I'm very happy to hear that you guys are open.
That, that was exactly the comment from the teachers. They just didn't think that was in the best interest of our students or our families, and we want to definitely put that first. Thank you.
Why we wanted to speak tonight last year. So.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on, 7.1 approval of our August 23rd meeting. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're flipping. Consent agenda is going to be now nine, so we're going to move nine up to eight. So we're going to do nine point, or 8.1, sorry. 8.1 lane changes. And that should be in your packet. I will use. Reach towards the bottom of your packet. So do we have a motion? I got David. Britt, anyone have a second?
Yes.
Any questions or discussion?
This, this is approved under, versus just listed, or what, or would this be approved in these lane changes now?
This would be approving, yeah. Yeah, if you guys approve these changes, that's the list that we received this summer. So.
Does one of you do this twice a year?
Yeah, it's now and I want to say January. Is that right?
So. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 8.2 student handbooks. This is for, to approve the second reading of the 21, 22, 8 through 5, 6 through 8, 9 through 12 student handbooks, including extracurricular handbooks. Do we have a motion? I moved. Motion by Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Next year, we'll just work hard to get these approved, and Shannon said they will be done before school starts, so we will be good to go. Well, we will do that. So anyway, we'll do better next year for our community. So everybody has rules. So parents, when they're taking their kids shopping, say, no, that's in the handbook. So, all right.
Three points. We would appreciate that.
Yeah. Always, you know, you go shopping with your 13, and you're like, no, and a no, and a no. So, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.3, this is the revised 21, 22 school calendar. That is the beautiful colored calendar that is in your board packet. Only thing changing is there will no longer be the Wednesdays as stated by Superintendent Heston. And thank you for Kela and Miranda for talking to us about that. So do we have a motion to approve? So motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
No, I didn't speak up. So when will this be communicated to parents?
We're going to, well, this Thursday for sure, if not tomorrow. So that's, I just, we had to make sure this got approved as soon as we can. So right now, today's the 13th, and our first day that was supposed to be late in October was the 13th, so we're giving people a month by hold. I wasn't, we're going to talk about tentatively sending out since you guys were approving it through our emails, but I just said, ah, we better wait for official board. So this Thursday for sure will go out, and we can talk about throwing it on our website probably soon tomorrow.
Yeah, I have something to read.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great question. All right, moving on to 8.4. This is to approve the sale of Keel Transportation, to set our transportation. I just want to start by thanking Bob Keel and his family. They have had this route forever. So I know for Bob, he took pride in his job, and so I hope that he enjoys retirement. So do we have a motion?
Move.
Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy?
Yeah, Amy.
All right. Any questions or discussion?
Was this a contractual requirement that we approved?
Yes. Yeah, I didn't, I was, when it first got brought up, I said, go ahead. I mean, I can't stop if I'm selling it. Well, actually, you can because the board's supposed to approve it.
Oh, wow.
So it started digging in the weeds of the contractual. Yeah, I guess so. Thanks for bringing it up. Anyway, so yeah, it's, it's a kind of a formality, I would say. But yeah, I guess if you got into a sticky situation, maybe, but I don't know, seems odd to me.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 9.5, this is a purchase of an activity bus pending M D E approval. Do we have their approval?
We have their approval. We got it right away Monday, as I shared with you guys. So since they approved it right away, you guys were on board. We're coming forward with that.
Okay, so you probably, yeah, we need to, Ronnie, you think, Penny, and we can take that off.
Yeah, let's take that now off because we don't need it anymore.
So just the purchase of the activity bus, all right, period.
Can you guys know the dollar mark, right? 59?
Yeah.
Okay.
Might as well state it. 59, what?
No, shoot. Well, I just opened my big mouth, so it's in the, it's 59.
No, we're going to say this, we're watching this.
Yeah, for sure. I can tell you, 59, 619, 19, 59,619, and 19 cents.
Okay, so Ronnie made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any more questions or discussion?
I think we're just lucky that there's even one available.
Very much so.
It's just impossible to get anywhere.
Yep. Absolutely. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 8.6, this is approved, or approved, the non-certified contract of Kelsey Raven, dishwasher, effective the start of the school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 8.7, non-certified contract for Taylor Fisher, paraprofessional, effective the start of the school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, 8.8, non-certified contract for Mary Moreland, paraprofessional, start of the 21, 22 school year. Is there a motion? Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 8.9, this is a non-certified contract for Stacy Jensen, paraprofessional, effective the start of the school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Brittany. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion?
I am going to abstain on this one, so.
Oh, is this, this one? I thought it was 9.10. Sorry. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and then Ronnie's abstaining. So. Okay, 8.10, non-certified contract for Rachel Cozer, paraprofessional, start September 7. Do we have a motion? And I got David. Nicole, you want a second?
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 8.11, you have all caught her on the panel?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so there's four. Yep, remember last month, we had a lunch, and you were in the, here we go, we were, we were down six. So now we're down two, and we maybe got a half today, too. We're working on a half, so if we can get another half, we got a whole. Anyway, I'm pretty good at math. Anyway. Yeah, so good news, though. I mean, last month, you guys were firing. I mean, we're letting everybody go, or they both find something better. And this month, we found people that, hey, let's give this a shot. So we're getting closer.
Perfect. All right, 8.11, this is a resolution update. Amy is going to read, there was, not, we're not going to read the whole resolution. There were several questions in regards to quarantine, and so Amy is going to read that portion of the resolution, and then we can ask as a board any question, and Shannon can get this certification on. So I'll just go ahead and read the red line version of what has been changed. So for quarantine positive cases, anyone who tests positive for COVID will need to stay at home in a 10-day isolation period. Non-household school contact, the decision to quarantine is up to individual families, regardless of vaccination status. Please refer to the letter you receive for further information. Household contact, if a household contact is not fully vaccinated, they will need to follow a 14-day quarantine. If a household contact is fully vaccinated, two weeks past the final dose, they do not need to follow a quarantine if they have had a close contact with positive case. Okay, so let's go ahead and get a motion, get a second, and then we'll have questions and discussion. Do we have a motion? So moved. Motion by Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All right. Brittany, you have some questions?
I guess I don't have a question on the way. It's been on the way. We're like functioning with it. So if there's a positive case in a class, because since we're not contact tracing, we're sending a letter to the whole class, is that accurate?
Yeah, so, so here's how this goes. I won't say yes. I'll explain. So, no, it's a great question, Brittany. So we had a, we had a case in the class, right? We checked with the teacher. We just want to make sure if there's anybody, so we're not contact tracing, and that we're just going full board digging, but we're asking the people that are in that room that are adults to say, listen, is there anybody? But we're asking the people that are in that room that are adults to say, listen, is there anybody you're concerned about? Okay, how about fire and music? You know, are we concerned about other people in this class? So in our first case, we identified there was maybe two or three that were definitely right next to this other person. So let's send a letter to those people, the others that didn't feel needed the letter because it wasn't nothing going on. Now, I run, now I go, but unfortunately, we had another person then in that classroom. So then I said, because now there's two, I want everybody to know. And that was an adult, but I just still want everybody to know. So that's where some people called me and said, wait, over here, you say you're not going to, but now you are. I said, you know what? I don't want you to ever say we didn't share the information. I want every parent to make an educated choice for their family. So by the way, there's been two cases in that classroom. For some people, that's too many. Perfect, make that choice, keep them home. For some, that's not bad, they've been out, but only had that kid was there for one day, I think we're okay, my kid wasn't identified as right next to him. And that's what I did share with the other parents, I said, we gave it to everybody only because there were two cases. I just think that's really important to inform people. So that's what we did, and that room's been fine since, but you know, right, not kind of what, I'm not in charge of this pandemic for this deal. But, so that's how that went. We are going to share, Kayla and Megan are doing a fantastic job. And this is, we've talked with Clay County Public Health, we talk to them every week, I talk to these two ladies. Well, Kayla, because she's not far from me, I talked to her today, two or three times today. I talked, I mean, every day I'm talking to her, anything, and then Megan reaching out to her, so. We're in constant communication. They feel this is nice and clean and easy, and it gives people choice. We're gonna try to inform as quickly and as good as we can, so people get to make an educated choice, or decision, yes.
So is it fair to say, like, if Nicole was the positive person and I sat next to her all day, you'd be contacting my parents?
We would get, we'd call you, we'd call you, and this is what Kayla and Megan have done, they'd call those people that we really feel are a close contact, just saying, hey, heads up, the letter's also coming.
Sure.
But we just want you to know that you need to watch your son or daughter, because they were close, and just want to make sure, watch them. If you see symptoms, please keep them home, and if you don't, it's your choice to keep them home or send them.
So if a family hears, or gets a letter that doesn't specifically say your child was next to, just assume it's in the room and not a.
It'll even say it on the top of the head, it'll say which class. It'll say that this was in this class, and there's been more than one case, or it'll give a number of cases in the class, in that case, it was Sue, it was the second one. And we just wanted to make sure that everybody knew, because everybody has a different threshold, right?
Right.
So I really appreciate Brittany, too, you shared the West Fargo one, and had numbers and percentages and all that. We talked about that, because they said, well, hey, this is a document they're using. It just seems they get on and they come off, so we were at seven and eight Friday, and today we're five, so it's like, okay, so should we take it right back off? That's where sometimes the numbers, I want to just wait a little bit, because we could also say, we might be at eight, but three of them are coming off Saturday. Or four more come off tomorrow. So instead of saying, well, you make your threshold, you're supposed to do this. Well, we are, but we're not, because tomorrow we will. You know what I mean? So that's why. It's, that's why I say sometimes we know the number, and we're talking about it multiple times a day. And based on that, that's what we're gonna send out to people.
No, I think that has clarified, because I'm sure everyone has gotten a million questions about it. So I'm just trying to think of the questions that I've been hearing, and that helps, I think, clarify some confusion.
Yeah. No, I really appreciate you asking, because I spent the better part of last week, three, four days, answering those questions, right? And then, and really what it came down to then is it made us kind of really evaluate what we wrote here.
Right.
And you noticed that I sent out a third version, I'm putting a lot in there. Wait a minute. And then Nicole, I think you said, you know, that sounds a lot like, uh, three years later, and I'm going, yeah, I went exactly the same. So it was a quick, oh, hang on, stop, let's sit down, Brooke, Kayla and I sat down, we looked, and I said, let's clean this up. So I appreciate those two, two working hard, we cleaned it up, and this is what we got. It's to simplify. But it's, it's valid questions, so how are you gonna do it? And that's how we're planning to do it. And again, right now, it's, we're in a good place. I'm not gonna say, I mean, it is what it is, and it can change tomorrow. That's what we're gonna talk again, you know, every day we'll talk about. So today was a good day, nothing happened to either spot today, so our numbers were down, and that's good.
Just regarding that number three, that household contact, if the contact is not fully vaccinated, they have to follow fourteen-day quarantine?
Yeah.
Which is one on the honor system with, obviously, the nurses.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If people want to lie to us, I guess that's on them.
Okay.
We're gonna, you know, have them vaccinated. It's pretty easy, though, if their son is four, or, no, I'm sorry, not four, but like six, because we know he isn't, or she isn't.
Sure.
Because they can't get it. So it's like, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to keep them home. Yes. If they're fourteen, and I guess I'd have to have that conversation with Kayla to say, seriously? I mean, come on, now, we want to, I get where you want your son or daughter in school, I get it, but let's, let's. This is the type of stuff we're trying to tell parents, keep them home if they're not perfect. Why? Because then we just don't have this great big follow-up, right? So that's what I would tell them, too, hey, come on. That's the rule. The brother's got it, keep your son or daughter home. It just does. I would hope that people, when they have a positive case in their house, are gonna take care of their family for a few weeks, or two weeks and fourteen days to keep them home. I would sure hope they will. Yeah.
You sounded like you reported the public health, too.
Yep, Kayla's, she lives, she's hired by public health, and we hire her from public health, so they're in constant communication. And she's tied to them, and I need to go down with other areas, superintendents, every group as well.
Any further questions? Yeah, we'll have to do a roll call. So we have Nicole, her motion, David made a second, so Laura? David?
Aye.
Amy? Aye. Myself, aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
Cool. Aye. Brittany, aye. Alright, twenty, or eight point twelve, twenty-one, twenty-three transportation contracts, as presented. Shannon met with them, I'm gonna have you, do you want to give a brief, do you want to talk on it, or? Did you send it out to her? Yeah, you sent it out.
It is.
As presented, yeah, okay. I have to talk myself through it.
You're doing a nice job of talking.
Talking myself through it, okay, let's.
I'm trying to remember if we got one or not, then.
I, yeah, I feel like the emails are endless, so do we have a, let's do a motion in a second, and we'll ask questions. Let's do that, I mean. Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Okay, let's have a little discussion here. So Shannon met with Center Transportation, Loop Racing, and Pender Transportation. And so Amy and I have all of them to sign this evening. It sounds like Eileen brought up, they were very satisfied with the discussion, and, yeah, so.
Yeah, so just so you guys know, and I believe I did bring it up previously, I talked to them first, so this is important, about ordering this activity bus. Because it's gonna affect them potentially, right? And they said, I'll quote, if it's okay, I can quote, one of them said, we really want you to buy it, because we need you to buy it, but we really don't want you to buy it, so we don't want you to buy it. He said, oh, well. Because they know, right now, they can't get enough drivers, so they're in this pinch, so we need to do it just to make sure kids can get to where they need to go. On the other hand, when they say yes, go ahead and buy it, they know it's gonna affect them, because they may lose some extra critical routes. But we gotta make sure our kids are getting to where they need to get, and we need to take care of the district, and that's what we're trying to do here, so. Yeah, so that was a discussion that was brought to them first, and then it was good. The other thing with that is the agreement that we had with the percentages. This year, I said, you know, I'm trying to win the budget, so let's keep it where we had it budgeted. They were agreeing on that. We gave them one the second year, but I also know the second year, this activity bus is gonna be going full board. So I think the percentage that we gave them, there's a percentage we're gonna start to recover a little bit on that as well, so I felt comfortable with that, so. As I shared, that's good.
Any more questions or discussion? Another plug, if you want to be a bus driver, please call.
You can call one eight hundred. Class B.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we're gonna go to the construct agenda, which is now nine point one. Laura, what are our claims and accounts?
Well, you know, I mean, when I looked at it, which was a couple days ago, from what you said, I feel like it's a different total than what's printed here. I feel like the three point eight, that was maybe from the last board meeting, because I did a super quick math, and according to these numbers, that doesn't add up to the three point eight.
And I did not.
And I don't have my email, my school email on my phone, so I couldn't check it.
And I'm sorry, I don't have, I got the bills, and I've got the new document that we created. I do not, I did not have the whole thing like that, so.
Can I ask Shannon a quick question?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
We went on the condo cover from Muscatell Burns, there's two in Delaware, amongst the same, we went on, once another six account, once oh seven, I don't know, was it two vehicles, a split, or?
Where are we at, on the bills?
Yeah, it'd be a Muscatell Burns, I imagine. Then we'll look at the six, oh seven, oh seven.
Yeah, you know what, that's the two eighty-nine, and the two eighty-nine, the one.
So Marcus sent those to me, and I just forwarded them to you. Okay, okay. So I can find Marcus's email tomorrow. I'm here. Because normally, it's, it's sent out to everyone.
Yeah.
So Marcus sent, Marcus does one, sends it to me, so then he doesn't know who that is, and then I forward those on to him. Okay. That's all I do. So.
So do we have, like, construction bills separate? Is it totally enough? What is?
Because from what I looked at, it totaled one eighty-nine.
Yeah, the bottom was one, like, I think it was like one ninety-two.
I was like, wow, that's so much less than the last time, because it was, you know, millions, and, and and I guess I looked at it a few days ago, and. So is that from the last meeting, three eight, six eight, is that what that one said? Three point eight, six eight, three fifteen, ninety-seven. And that's the same total, yeah. That's what I shot. So yeah, I would go off of what that one. The, the total of that.
The total, you have the bottom there, David?
Yes.
Uh, one eighty-three.
Three twenty-nine, twenty-three.
Yeah, let's go up that, because, yeah, we're, we're requiring construction bills, we just did that last meeting.
Yeah, because there. That's why. Yeah, and I didn't, and I already filed away from last week.
Brittany, one question on a Muscatell roll cover here.
The roll cover, so there's two on there, and so one was for the pickup, what was the other one for? Or what was it? Or what was in it? It says roll cover for pickup, two eighty-nine, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and then a roll cover for pickup for two eighty-nine.
So the total was?
Five eighty, five seventy-eight.
Split between the Glenn and Tate end of yours.
There you go.
That's what the whole thing. That's what I was thinking, it was split, but I wasn't sure.
You know, I went through this this time, and I yelled it all over, and I sat with the young lady today, and I thought, all these bills.
Yeah.
And I asked her about a lot of split stuff on here today, but Ronnie. It's fantastic, she thought, hey, I love it, it's beautiful. What? I did not see, how did we do this thing?
Okay, alright, so we have the bill amount, correct one here, sorry for the delay. We're also approving the donation for the DJ Purple Fishing Club, and they want a three hundred dollars to be used for high school fayed, and approve the donation from Donors Choice, and they want a four hundred to be used for elementary music.
Can I just interject something?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And just so, since we have a lot of public here, and we're trying to go, okay, where's the number, oh my god, you know, the world's not falling apart. That's why this document that I have with you today shows you exactly, and every month, you know exactly where the budget is, as far as our budgeted number and our percentage. So just so everybody can hear it, right now, we've spent on budgets, our, our funds, one, two, and four, we're at six point three eight percent of our budget spent through August, and we're supposed to be at eight percent. So we're under that number. Marcus said that it's not a hundred percent enough, but it's just like very close, and the ones that he had left, he felt were all little. So he said, we are definitely be low at eight percent. It's September thirteenth, he doesn't have it perfectly closed out for August, but it's very close, so. I wanted to just make sure everybody's going, they don't even know their numbers. We know our numbers, they're right here. If anybody wants to see them, fantastic. The other thing is in the bottom right, you see revenue received versus budget. You can see that the state and the county are at four point one percent. That's what we received in funds from the state and county. So you can see that's behind. That'll stay behind most of our school year, and then it catches up towards the end. Okay, so there's certain months that we get more money from the county and less from the state, and vice versa. Most of the time, the state is coming through. I just want to make sure everybody understands that this document initial us exactly where we're at, and that's very important for you guys and them, but.
Can I just clarify again what the different funds are?
Yeah, 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 you got, fund one is our general fund, so that's mostly what our district, two is food service, and four is community, our community services, so, yeah. You can also see underneath, we just have student activity, because the board now, that's scheming a lot, two thousand and nineteen, that you guys have to oversee student activity. I like that separate, because that's not really our money to spend. It's their money to spend, but you, we still have to account for, so you can see that number listed below. And then it shows their total budget, so. That's why I like to show you that our budget, the three to six point three eight, when you put the activity account in there, it's six point three five, well, it's a non-factor for us, so, okay?
Do we have a motion? So motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alright, now ten point one, this is additional action item, non-certified contract for Brooklyn Gonzales, paraprofessional, effective September ninth. Do we have a motion? Motion by Brittany, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion?
This was just adding on at the end, or was it?
Yeah, I think it was, I believe you guys added this on last weekend. Additional action items.
Yeah, was this just happened today, or?
Today, Friday. Oh, okay, alright. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Great, eleven point one, next board meeting is Monday, September twenty-seventh, at six o'clock, in the High School Media Center. Following that meeting, eleven point two is Facilities and Transportation Committee meeting. At the conclusion, personnel is gonna be meeting after this, so Laura, David, aye. I did hear from Mark Dorn about our November meeting. And so we kind of need to pick out a date, and I just want some feedback. She said for that the class would be two hours. So, you know, we meet on the eighth and the twenty-second, do we want, you know, we already have our scheduled committee meetings afterwards. What does November fifteenth look like for everybody who's doing it just to separate that evening, and she would beam in from the MSB offices?
Monday?
Monday. Yeah. Like, do you want me to, she's open right now, I asked her, I threw her a couple leads. Do we think six, or do we want to do seven? Is that easier? What are your thoughts? Six?
Because what, if it's only two hours?
Yeah.
What's our other committee meetings in November?
November, where's that wonderful?
Look at your colorful.
Colorful personnel.
Facilities on the other, so.
And I think those are important ones that we need to have, and especially with right now with the building. So I say we try to go for a non-school board night, because it's gonna be really, really late. So how about I contact her and see if November fifteenth at six o'clock, I'm gonna actually email her right as soon as we're done here.
And she brings me in here, too, is that right?
Uh, yes, yes. So we can do kind of like, how do you feel what's going, and you feel what's going, so. All good. Alright, any other things, team, to discuss? So we'll have about a ten-minute or five, five-minute break for personnel to use the restroom, and then we'll get going on our agenda items. So meeting is adjourned, it is seven oh eight. Thank you all. is 7:08, thank you all.